Movement. So sometimes you play a fool, you become a muu muu to be able to succeed and look and get what you want to get. You have to become a muu muu to survive many evil people. You have to behave like a dondy. And there will be gallivanting, thinking that they are the one who have everything, but just maintain yourself. Don't show that you are wise. Do not show, let your wiseness be outside. But when it comes to them, you'll be muu muu. That is the criminals in politics and have brought the criminality from their Nigeria politics to the IPOB and Biafra movement. So sometimes you play a fool, you become a muu muu to be able to succeed and look and get what you want to get. You have to become a muu muu to survive many evil people. You have to behave like a dondy. And there will be gallivanting, thinking that they are the one who have everything, but just maintain yourself. Don't show that you are wise. Do not show, let your wiseness be outside. But when it comes to them, you'll be muu muu. That is the criminals in politics and have brought the criminality from their Nigeria politics to the IPOB and Biafra movement. So sometimes you play a fool, you become a muu muu to be able to succeed and look and get what you want to get. You have to become a muu muu to survive many evil people. You have to behave like a dondy. And there will be gallivanting, thinking that they are the one who have everything, but just maintain yourself. Don't show that you are wise. Do not show, let your wiseness be outside. But when it comes to them, you'll be muu muu. That is the criminals in politics and have brought the criminality from their Nigeria politics to the IPOB and Biafra movement. So sometimes you play a fool, you become a muu muu to be able to succeed and look and get what you want to get. You have to become a muu muu to survive many evil people. You have to behave like a dondy. And there will be gallivanting, thinking that they are the one who have everything, but just maintain yourself. Don't show that you are wise. Do not show, let your wiseness be outside. But when it comes to them, you'll be muu muu. That is the criminals in politics and have brought the criminality from their Nigeria politics to the IPOB and Biafra movement. So sometimes you play a fool, you become a muu muu to be able to succeed and look and get what you want to get. You have to become a muu muu to survive many evil people. You have to behave like a dondy. And there will be gallivanting, thinking that they are the one who have everything, but just maintain yourself. Don't show that you are wise. Do not show, let your wiseness be outside. But when it comes to them, you'll be muu muu. That is the criminals in politics and have brought the criminality from their Nigeria politics to the IPOB and Biafra movement. So sometimes you play a fool, you become a muu muu to be able to succeed and look and get what you want to get. You have to become a muu muu to survive many evil people. You have to behave like a dondy. And there will be gallivanting, thinking that they are the one who have everything, but just maintain yourself. Don't show that you are wise. Do not show, let your wiseness be outside. But when it comes to them, you'll be muu muu. That is the criminals in polit-
Those who are asking, did you say Biafra will come in 2023? Biafra has been restored already. What is remaining is a complete declaration that will be defended. And before that happen, there are many things that we need to put in place. I want you to recount the achievement of the Biafra Republic government in exile. Under the leadership of Simon Eka, what we have achieved in 2023 and ask yourself that question again, and you will look very stupid. We have been able to form government in exile in 2023. In 2023, we have formed the de facto government. In 2023, we have launched Biafra Liberation Army. In 2023, we launched Biafra Navy. We launched Biafra Air Force. We launched the forces of Biafra. In 2023, we adopted Helsinki Declaration, which is the constitution of Biafra. In 2023, we had a convention in Finland where Biafra people gathered from all over the world as delegates to vote on the Biafra Charter, which is a living document subjected to amendment. In 2023, we have created forty states of Biafra. And believe me, many more states will come because we are not done yet. In 2023, not only that we created state, we also brought a redesigned and redrawn Biafra map to reflect the current situation and the current demography of Biafra. In 2023, we started engaging officially Nigeria state in a guerrilla warfare on self-defense. In 2023, we officially and publicly engage Nigeria terrorist army and we are neutralizing them on daily basis. It has never happened before in the history of Biafra after the war. In 2023, we publicly and openly made sure that Nigeria doesn't kill again in Biafra land and go free. So if you look at those things I've mentioned and those ones I have not even mentioned, are you still going to challenge Simon Eka that Biafra has not been restored in 2023? Biafra declaration is not about mouth pronouncement. It's about putting every structure in place. It's about putting every mechanism and measures in place to shaping the map and the structure of Biafra. In 2023, we have designed the economic viability of Biafra. In 2023, we have kicked off the Biafra urban development project. In 2023, we've made a lot of impact globally. In 2023, the Biafra awareness gained the highest momentum in the history of Biafra since after the war. In 2023, we made the Nigeria terrorist army to cry on the floor of National Assembly. It has never happened in the history of Nigeria. In 2023, those who are serving as the agent of Nigeria benefiting from the corrupt entity called Nigeria openly called for persecution, execution and the kidnapping and arresting of Simon Eka. Because they know that this is a different thing from what they have seen in their entire life. In 2023, they call for the arrest of Simon Eka and call for the release of Mazinamdekan, Confucian. In 2023, after they have used many years to plan the kidnapping of Mazinamdekan, they have come to say Mazinamdekan is a saint. He's a very gentleman, he's a nice person. But just two years ago, they kidnapped this nice person from Kenya. Two years ago, they tortured him for eight days. Two years ago, he was an evil man. Two years ago, they called him terrorist. Two years ago, he was everything evil to them. Two years ago, they spent hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. They kidnapped him and put him into private jet from Kenya to Nigeria. Two years ago, Mazinamdekan was everything evil to Nigeria, including to Ohanes and the Igu and all of them. Two years ago, he was the only problem of Nigeria. Two years ago, he was the only person that constituted all manner of insecurity in Nigeria. He was the one who is more deadlier than Boko Haram. He was everything that Nigeria don't want to see. Today, as Simon Eka take the Biafra liberation to the next level, the same people are now calling Mazinamdekan the most sensible person. These are hypocrites, these are devilish people, these are criminals. The only thing they want to do is to give dog a bad name in order to kill it. They have given bad that name to Mazinamdekan. They themselves were the one who condemned Mazinamdekan. The same people today, they have seen that, yes indeed, someone actually followed this footsteps of Mazinamdekan and ready to drag all of them to Biafra land. When we get to Biafra land, we will treat their fuck up very well. Today, the same people who gave the bad name to Mazinamdekan in order to be kidnapped, they slandered his name, blackmailed him to other ethnic nationalities in Nigeria. All of them today has come to say that Mazinamdekan is very sensible. Now it is Simon Eka is the problem. These people who are just evil from birth refuse to understand why Simon Eka have decided to take this thing upon himself to liberate the people of Biafra who has been subjugated and chained with Islamic state agenda. They found themselves in a hole. They tagged us, thought in a circle. Because they thought that they have actually systematically conquered everybody by dividing, creating state, dividing us, changing the demography and map of Biafra people. And at the end of the day, they structured out five tiny states, called it five eastern states. And they say, let us continue to divide them. And now they tell you, oh, you are talking about Biafra. You are just five states in the circle. We have come to destroy their evil agenda. Today, you will understand that the plan of the Islamic state has failed. Today, the Biafra people are proudly announcing the forty state, which is called the United States of Biafra. Forty complete states, cut across board, including in the area where they claim they were never Biafra. I have come to learn from what Biafra did wrong in nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy. I have come to learn what Uwazrike did wrong from the time he started the Biafra movement. And I have come to learn what Mazinamdekan did right and was in the process of doing before the plan and kidnapped him. I continue from there and today we are where we are. They are not resting. Those IPOB Nigeria are not resting as well. Every given opportunity, they think that there is infight in the Biafra government. They will say, oh, their hope now is that they are fighting. And they are hoping that there is infight in the Biafra government. That is to tell you that, like we said, they are cursed, they are cursed and they can never arise again. Biafra government in exile is a government that nobody born of a woman marching on this planet, using your footwork on the ground will ever, ever destroy. Biafra has been restored. In 2023, we have a government, we have a structure of the government of Biafra. We have every department that made Biafra government a legitimate government. The people of Biafra are loyal to the government, both in the exile and in the homeland. We have governors, state administrators in all the forty states of Biafra. We have the deputy governors, which is called administrators. We have the secretary of state of each state in Biafra land. We have the chairman and managers of county and district. If you do not understand that with this structure we have now, one day you will sleep in Nigeria and wake up in Biafra. It means that you are an idiot. I told you that by the time I finish with Nigeria, you will sleep in Nigeria one day and wake up in Biafra. The next phase is to set up the police of Biafra. The reason why we have not set up the police is because it is going to be state police. Every state will have their police. Every state will be independent. It is going to be local police and there is no interference from the central government of Biafra. The military is a joint military, it's one military that will protect this territorial integrity of Biafra. When one state is attacked, it means that you have attacked all of us. So my people, for those who are asking, when are you going to declare Biafra? We have already declared Biafra. We are only waiting for us to conclude the last phase of the Biafra government. And one day you will sleep and wake up in Biafra, like I said. Then we must capture every cranny of the Biafra territory.
We are starting with the anthem now, so please, if you are seated, do well to stand while the anthem is on. If you can stand, you turn off your camera, please.
Land of the rising sun, we love and cherish. Be love and hope, land of our brave heroes. We must defend our lives, or we shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all our faults. Fortive the prize is that for all we hold dear. Then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to the Africans, a great nation. Oh, Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our freedom. The women stand, the witch and all that are free. Shall always be a flag of liberty. We shall imagine triumphant promise ordeal. And through the crucible, our scared will pass. When we are poised, the wounds of battles to heal. We shall remember those who guide us. Then shall our throne, let fill the glorious song. Of victory, we score all might and wrong. Oh God, protect us from the ill before. Guide all our movements, lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human is call. To give and not to come the costly chain. Let's all rule to some with grandeur of mess. To make this sky a land of righteousness.
Oh hail me your bro. Land of the rising sun, we love and cherish. Stuck in these, oh hail me. God bless Biafra, in him we trust. Shout it, sing it, oh. God bless Biafra, we have be much triumphant from all our faults. Escape west victorious. And sing it, oh. Oh hail me your bro. We shall always remember all that perished. In the struggle for our freedom, all hail our heroes. Our prayers shall make them good day and night. Save them always. Oh hail me your bro. Oh hail me. No sunshine everywhere, we crave humility. God, go and good health to all. There's no shield they must have. Unleash my own heart, it would grant. We are the good ones, shining all night.
We observe a minute silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra and the time starts now. We mourn our heroes and we celebrate them, both those that have passed on and those still fighting. As they have the task of liberating the United States of Biafra, the strength of Chukokike will be with them until Biafra is totally liberated. You say, you say. Welcome everyone to you is a north and south town hall meeting of the Biafra Republic Government in exile. Honorable rep, Honorable Milike, I give the mic back to you. We are into the program now. We are done with item one, so you continue from item two. Please unmute yourself.
Alright, thank you, Honorable Sunny. Again, greetings Biafrans. And now we will have Honorable Kelo lead us into this congregation. So Honorable Kelo, please, would you lead us with the opening prayer?
Absolutely. Honorable, thank you, Honorable rep, and thank you, Biafrans. Let us now rise to honor our heavenly father and invite him into this gathering, for we have none else except him, alright? If you are, if you are a man, please take off your caps, so we are commanded in 1 Corinthians eleven. If you're a woman, please cover your head, so we are commanded in 1 Corinthians chapter eleven. Oh, our heavenly father, father in heaven, you are the Chukokike of Biafra. We hallow your name this very day, father. And we say, may all glory, all honor, all praises, all might, all power and might belong unto you, father, forever and ever. Amen. We pray, father, that this day, that you look on us, holy father. Look on us, your children, we who are the direct descendants of Abraham, who is your friend and Isaac and Jacob. And you have even called us your firstborn and the apple of your eyes. Look on all the troubles we are in, the depression, the killings, the captivity we are in, the oppression that surrounds us, holy father. But you have told us that the reason all this evils are on us is because we are worshiping idols. For you told us in Wisdom of Solomon, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-seven, that the worshiping of idols is what brings all kinds of evil. And so long as we are worshiping idols, those evils will continue until we cease from worshiping idols. Then the evils we cease. Yes, father, you told us in Deuteronomy, chapter four, that you have divided all sorts of idols to the all the nations, but we, who are your children, you told, we must worship you. We are not to join the nations to worship their idols. But father, we have been ignorant of that. And so I pray, holy father, your great mercy is that you wink on our iniquities, wink on our ignorance. Open our eyes, our father, teach us the way to come back to worship you in spirit and in truth. Father, I will guess that if I take a poll now, everyone under my voice will say, yes, we want to worship you in spirit and in truth, but we don't know how. We are like those who are dropped in the middle of ocean and don't know how to approach you. But we humble ourselves, we humble our spirits and say, holy father, merciful father, there's no one as merciful as you are. You are the god of circumstances. We pray that you will stretch out your mighty arm to save us, to pull us to you, and we will worship you. So even our leader have said that when you gather us in the land of Biafra, we will dance in the street like crazy people, dance more than, be vile more than our, our forefather, King David danced when he brought back the Tawana ko, that we are going to worship you, father. I pray, father, that even at this point, our father, those that are hearing our voice, pull us to you, teach us your ways, teach us your commandments, for that is what you commanded us. So that when we gather, we'll be able, through our teachings and our behavior and our doings, our brothers will take it and so you will save us from all the iniquities that we are in. Look at all the oppressions that we are being subjugated to. Father, even today, we are closing the feast of Passover. We've tried to rejoice and be glad in it, but the news we are getting from back home, those that have been killed, the destructions that are happening, oppressions that are there, have maddened our rejoicing. And so only you, father, will return our joy, make it full again, and we know that you are going to do it, father. And so we thank you, father. We give you all the glory. We pray that you be with us in this meeting. We thank you for our beloved angels, those that are fighting to defend the land. We pray, father, that you continue to protect them, send now your hosts to be with them, our father, to guide them, to protect them from every, every evil that they withdraw at them. For you have said that no weapon thrown against your people will be effective. We pray for the destruction of all those who have come into the land to destroy our people. I was reading today that there are over six hundred towns in the southeast alone. Father, they have proposed, but they don't know one thing, that we are your children, the apple of your eyes. That whatever plan they have planned, they are going to fail woefully. And so, father, I pray for your destruction out of the land. And then I pray also for all those that supposed to be Biafrans who are sabotaging this your way. For we know that it is your way to gather us back in the land of Biafra. We know that, father. And so pray that your judgment will fall on them, that going forward from this day, all the place that you pronounce on Egypt will be on them. Let their days be darkened, that they are so terrified. Let them not have peace unless they come out to confess and disease from evil. Oh father, let your mighty judgment begin in the house, our father. So that wickedness of the wicked will begin to abate in that place. Give you glory, father, for we know that you will give us Biafra. We just only pray, father, that you make the time short, holy father, and give us Biafra, and we will rejoice. We pray, father, that also that you withdraw us and teach us your ways, and we will walk in it. We give you all the glory for the mighty things you are doing. We thank you for those you have elected that have volunteered themselves in this struggle for APM. We pray for continuing, sustaining him, continue to give him wisdom to lead. We pray for that your servants who have been maliciously detained and kidnapped, pray that you break every hand that is holding them, for there is no reason that they should be holding them there. Pray for, especially for Simon Eka. Pray for, especially for Simon Epa and Mazin Namdekanu, Father, that you will release them from the jail in not distant time, Holy Father. And all those that they have been kidnapping from the Biafra land and putting away, Father, release them. All those that have had secret councils against us, our Father, let your tongue fall on themselves and send fire amongst them and let them be destroyed. Whatever they have planned for your children, let it come on them, sevenfold, Holy Father. We give you glory, our Father, for the mighty things you are doing. We praise that you be with us today. We pray that you continue to lead, teach and guide us, especially to show us the paths back to you that we may continue to do your way. This I pray, in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, in the name of Chukwokikka Biamu, our Christ the Black Messiah. This I pray in the name of the holy name. You say? Amen.
Your all praises to Most High Chukwokikka Biamu for that wonderful prayer, and thank you, Honorable Kelo.
All praises to you, Most High.
Our next our next item is is the welcoming of our dignitaries and others attending this town hall meeting. Now, I I thank Biafrans from all walks of life from around the globe who are attending this town hall meeting. It is worthy for them to come because this is the only way that many of us can support what's going on, can support Brede, can support APM, can also quicken the release of our Prime Minister and Mazin Namdekanu. So this afternoon, I I'd like to welcome our APM for grace in this occasion. And he, as you all know, has been working very hard. I mean, that is an understatement. He has been, he has been really burning the midnight candle, especially wearing two hats. One as the
Please give me a minute, I'll let you know when to join shortly, I'll be joining shortly, okay?
Alright. And also the Assistant or Active Prime Minister. I also like to welcome our media team. They are doing a thankless job. I mean, from our Minister of Communications, Sunny, Honorable Sunny Akmarawa, Deputy Minister of Information, Honorable Ajere, and Honorable Betty Ada. I'm sorry, I forgot the last name, but Honorable Betty, that I'll do for now. And Honorable 555, we know him as 555, that's the popular name right there, Vision, and we thank, we thank him. And others that we have not, I mean, you find on X space. By the way, those of us who are not familiar with X space, this is, try to go there and listen to what, you know, how hard these people are working, okay? And so we also like to welcome all the cabinet members. Those that I have not mentioned, for example, Honorable Love Akobundu, Honorable Obi from the EU rep, also Honorable Emma Madu Abum, and a host of them, and those that I have not mentioned, please pardon me, but we mean well. The US Brede is indebted to all of you for all you do for us behind the scenes. And I will give, you know, this would be inappropriate for us to continue without remembering our leaders who have been denied their human rights. Mazin Namdekanu and our Prime Minister Mazin Simon Etna. And it's always our prayer that the Most High will give them the strength, give them the wisdom, and also surround them with his angels, that nothing they plan against them would work. So we, all of us, should continue to pray, to remember every Biafran that has been incarcerated and held against their will, whether it is in the zoo or whether it is outside the zoo. So, and also like to remember, last but not the least, our BDF, Biafra Defense Forces. Remember our Chief Defense Staff, Chief of Defense Staff, C. Roz, and his commanders, his generals. These are people who have taken it upon themselves to make sure that Biafra is here to stay. Because without our BDF, absolutely, we will not have a Biafra to talk about. So we also remember them this moment and thank them and promise them. And I'm promising them on behalf of those of us that are in the diaspora, that we will do everything in our power to give them the support they need. Because we are at a point in time in our in our lives that if we don't do anything, we will never never achieve Biafra. So now it's incumbent on all of us to rise up, and those of us sitting on the fence, think again. Because this is for you, for your generations unborn, and I don't know how many times many of us have mentioned this important fact about generations unborn. And so if you are sitting on the fence, understand this, someday you will be unable to do anything, but just watch. And now that we need you, and you are young, and you are bustling, this is the time to make that investment for the future. It's not all about us anymore, it's about the future generation. So we ask you to reconsider. It is very important. And also, I seize this moment to also remind those that think, oh, we're just giving, just a petance of offering. If you can do more, please reconsider, do more. Because if we all join hands together and do more, absolutely, we will see the result. And right now, we can already see the results in Washington DC. So please, come out and help us, and help yourself too. And so I thank all that are attending this fundraising for their presence here. And on that note, I will be presenting the colonnade.
And it's time, Milike.
Yes.
Please, before you go to the colonnade,
Right.
Use that opportunity to introduce your admins and reps first before you go to the colonnade, because I think you omitted that in your program, sorry, it's an oversight. So introduce your admins first before you go to the colonnade.
What I can say at this point is that if you are an admin and you are in the house, please raise your hand. If you are an admin from any of the states in the house, please raise your hand. And I said a very good reason why I didn't do that, why I left that out. So again, if you are an admin, okay, so in your house, please raise your hand. So five, six. So there are six. Okay, there are six of us, six admins out of possibly, I'll say 15. And so, anyway. Yeah, you can go ahead and bring down your hands. Yeah, go ahead and bring them down. So Honorable Sunny?
Yes, my honorable Rep.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You can continue. Now we know, we know all your beautiful and handsome admins, because we didn't see these beautiful faces. Some of them were hiding. Honorable Love was hiding. Honorable Gay was hiding, and even Honorable Kelo, nobody knew that he is an able admin. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's get the other admins on camera if they want. So we saw Mark Admins, no, Mark Genesis. Mark Genesis is for which state?
California.
Okay, California.
California, yes.
Ohio, Amaka. Mark Genesis, okay, California.
Some of them are probably at work, you know, so like
Yeah, okay. Just for them to have their call so that they can, for those that
That's Mazin Mark. They will, they will.
When it's time, then you can use your mic. Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Rep.
Alright, thank you, sir. Now, so I will proceed to presenting the colonnade, and I will step back a little bit because the camera may not do enough justice, so I will tilt it up a little bit so you I don't know if I can do this. I'm trying to see if I can tilt it a little. Okay. Let me see.
Turn to your computer, turn to your computer.
Turn to my computer. Okay, let me do that. One second, one second, one second. Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. And that's, you're looking at the colonnade and the alligator pepper, and and you know, this is a very cultural thing that if we allow the Islamists to have their way, it will never exist anymore. They will ban it completely. And of all the cultural reasons that this colonnade presents, one of the ones that appealed to me, and really is very important, is the idea of the bond to continue the bond between ourselves and the bonds to the land. And the other day, somebody, I read something in, I believe it's in Telegram or platform, that we lose our trees, you know, colonnade trees in Biafra land, that those things are going extinct. And it's important that we work hard to bring back Biafra so that we can continue growing this colonnade, you know, is very important. And so now I'll go, I'll go ahead and and prepare this colonnade. And before I do that, I'm gonna have a word of prayer. Okay? And I will speak in English, so that everybody will hear what I'm saying or know what I'm saying. I do not subscribe to the idea that the most, that our culture, you know, you have to do the blessing in our cultural languages because the Most High is the one who created us and gave us, you know, words. So it doesn't matter what we say, the Most High will hear and bless. So let us once again rise while I give praise to the Most High. Our Most High Chukwokikka Biamu. I thank you for this moment. For this moment that we have come to present this colonnade, which is a symbol of our bonding together. I will call on our forefathers, our ancestors to come and share with this colonnade. And know, they will share in this colonnade in their spirit. I call on our elders to come and share in this colonnade. I know that they will share in this colonnade in spirit. I call upon the land of Biafra to bless this colonnade and to have a portion of it. Because I know that the land of Biafra is blessed and that we will inherit a bountiful land that we can grow our colonnades. I call upon the countries that all of us are in to join us and share in this colonnade for allowing us to be in their country. And Heavenly Father, above all, I call you, Chukwokikka Biamu, to bless everyone that is in this gathering that we will continue to show our love to you and our love to ourselves and our love to our man. This is my prayer in your holy, mighty, precious name. You say? You say? Yeah, please be seated. Now, I prepare this colonnade, and as I prepare it, I am going to take, lift my portion as the one who prepared it as the one who prepared it with a hundred Ajma. And I'm also gonna represent Virginia to lift portion for Virginia with a hundred Ajma and that will make it two hundred Ajma. Now, I invite, I invite the admins to come up and pick the colonot and then make their own donations for each of the states. So, the floor is open for the admins. Are you there, uh, honorable? Honorable Power?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here. Honorable Kelo, yeah, Honorable Kelo, over to you.
Thank you, Honorable Power. Thank you, my honorable rep. Um, the State of Arizona welcomes our APM uh, this uh holiday of uh Passover conclusion and we are taking the cola with fifty Ajma. Thank you.
Yeah, well.
All right, we have Honorable Love. Honorable Love, over to you.
Yeah. There were no more Biafra.
There were.
On behalf of New York, I will get the cola with fifty Ajma and making it um a hundred dollar, a hundred Ajma to welcome APM. And ETL is using hundred Ajma to welcome APM. So that will be two fifty Ajma from New York as of now. Thank you.
There were.
Thank you. We have Honorable Chima. Honorable Chima, over to you.
Uh, hello, everybody.
There were.
There.
But, uh, I would take colonot four on behalf of Jersey uh, with two hundred and fifty dollars. There were.
There were.
Thank you. There were. Thank you. We come to Ohio Admin, Amaka, over to you.
Good evening, gentlemen, uh, ladies and gentlemen in the house. There were my ministers, reps. Uh, beautiful ladies, um, I can't call you, you know, I'm not good at doing that, but I, I greet everyone. Thank you so much for all your good works. Thank you, our APM. Thank you, our PM and the, our leader. Though they are not here, but they are with us in the spirit, fighting. And we are here. Uh, I am taking a, a cola, a piece of cola with a hundred Ajma on behalf of Ohio. Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm still here.
Thank you, thank you, Amaka. Thank you, State of Ohio. His academic highness, over to you. Your hand is up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Ah, good, 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 good. Um, on behalf of my son and my family, I'm taking the colonot with a whooping sum of thirty Ajma to welcome our APM in America. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
It will be sent, it will be sent, the receipt will be sent uh latest in two days. That's the information. God bless you, Akolas the Clouroom. I am his academic highness.
Thank you.
There were.
Man, thank you.
We, are, are there any more admins?
Yeah, we have Abigail, Abigail, over to you, Texas Admin.
Uh, greetings, everyone of us. Greetings. You're welcome, um, our APM, you're welcome, my uh, not in South American rep. Our honorable Communication Minister, you are most welcome. And all the reps and admins and all the cabinet members, you are most welcome. Texas um is picking colonot today so far with sixty-five Ajma. And, um, we are welcoming our PM with three hundred and forty Ajma today.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Right, we come to Mark Genesis. Mark Genesis, over to you.
All hail Biafra.
All hail Biafra.
Yeah, um, uh, all protocols observed, recognizing our APM in the house. Honorable Minister Sunny, all the ministers in the house. I recognize the Honorable Eminique, uh, our rep for uh North and South America. And, um, uh, California is uh taking cola with fifty dollars and also uh welcoming our APM in the house with three hundred dollars. That would be three fifty.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
There were.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more hands? Now, the floor is open to everyone to pick cola. The reps has picked their own for their state, so the floor is open now to everyone that wants to pick cola for themselves. Raise your hand, please.
I may also add that if, if the admin had designated somebody, they can also raise your hand and pick cola for, for the admin for their state.
Sorry, I think maybe I, I want to call the names of, um, those uh who supported this uh gathering today. The Honorable H. One hundred and thirty dollars. Our Honorable Chinera Apple sixty Ajma, sorry. Myself forty Ajma, Honorable Amo will be fifty Ajma. Uh, Ezia Damata, one hundred and twenty-five Ajma. That's what Texas has done so far, bringing us to four hundred and five Ajma.
There were.
There were.
Okay, we got a hand up, Mazie Son. Honorable Sunny?
Okay, Honorable, uh, Okusisi, Ashan Rep, over to you, sir.
Good morning, everyone.
There were.
Yeah, yeah. I recognize you, admire you, the honorable Eminique. Thank you for what you are doing. God bless you, God bless you. I just woke up and saw that we are online. Now, uh, South Korean supporting with, uh, we are taking the colonot with fifty Ajma. Thank you.
There were, there were.
Yep.
Thank you.
More hands up, more hands up. He's picking up cooler time. More hands up. Okay, Honorable Sunny?
Yes, my honorable rep.
Yeah, um, since it's slowing down, uh.
Hold on, let me, let me give, um, let me give them a wake up, um, number.
Yes, yes.
There's always a wake up number from, uh, our honorable PM, Tobias France.
Everyone.
There were, there was.
Back to you, Honorable Rep. Please, um, unmute yourself, please.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Sunny. So now, um, I'm certain that, uh, some admins will be coming in a little later. Because as you know, this is Friday and, um, a lot of, a lot of us here are still at work. But, uh, uh, I have to tender a public apology to APM uh, for scheduling this program on, on, at this time. And, um, but anyways, uh, we will just wait for them to come in. And while we're waiting, uh, we can also go to the next item, which is the general offering, uh, to our guests.
Honorable, uh, Minister, please, uh, uh, Honorable Eminique.
Yes, sir.
Let me, I have a, a quick announcement to make.
Yes, sir.
If, uh, I'm permitted. Good afternoon, fellow Biafrans.
Good afternoon, sir.
Greeting, uh, to our leader, Mazie Namdekan, our Prime Minister. Our hero powers, we remember them. Greetings, fellow Biafrans. Greetings for everyone that have been working hard to make sure that we actualize Biafra. Both those sitting at home, both those praying to make sure Jukwoki Kabiama answer our prayer. And our angels, our BDF, we remember them. We appreciate you all. Please, I have announcement to make here because we have been asking the Zulu terrorist country to leave Biafra land of which we are fighting them every day. There is serious war going on. And the Gota media of the Zulu country called Nigeria, they are not reporting it. We assure them that is this war, this war, the ongoing war. This not going to be like nineteen sixty-seven. Please, uh, fellow citizen in Okiwu, we have intel that the Nigerian terrorist military We have intel that the Nigerian terrorist military, starting from tomorrow, 4:00 AM. They are planning on raiding Okiwé. Please, people of Okiwé, we are doing all the preparation as we can. And please be vigilant. And the Nigerian terrorist state, they are planning this with a major from 82 division. They are working with 35 forward operation base. Please, if you in Okiwé, be alert. And this is not the first time they've been doing this. And we always repair them back. We are fighting to defend our land. It's our duty to fight this fight. And we'll do everything we can to defend our land. Please, if you don't mind, should I just use this opportunity to say one or two things before you go back to your program? I remember you called me earlier.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. Only today, me and the minister, the Honorable Minister of Information, Mazze Sunny Aparawa, we deliver the message from our Prime Minister. And we applaud, we appreciate our honorable minister, who bring his time, who devote his time to live everything he's doing to make sure he visit our PM. We appreciate you, Honorable Mazze Imam Madu Abum, the Chairman of the CRC and the Advisory, and also Honorable Obi Obodu. Thank you guys for your service, we really appreciate, we appreciate. And I want us to dwell on the message of our Prime Minister. And this is things that we already know, starting from our leader Mazze Namdekan. He preached, 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 preached and preached for years. And he said he's tired of preaching. He said he's tired of preaching, don't mean he's giving up. He want all of us to stand strong, to fight this fight to the end, to remain resilient, to take action when it's needed, when it's necessary. And our Prime Minister also follow the same footsteps, of which I believe each and every one of us here are following the same template or their footsteps. We are volunteer armies. We volunteer to fight for this freedom. No one drag us from our house. Please, if you're here today and you were dragged out, you can please raise your hand. So we let us keep note and acknowledge that. I believe we are all volunteer armies. And in history of mankind, you can never defeat volunteer armies. Because these armies are people that bring their time and have made up their mind, whether good or bad, they will fight to the end. You can bribe them because they did not join to fight because of monetary that they ask for or that they want. Our Prime Minister make it clear that our freedom is not negotiable. What a coincidence, yesterday we also get a message from our sister nation, Ambazonia. The same message, that Ambazonia is not for sale, Biafran is not for sale. Ambazonia is not, your freedom is not negotiable. Just like the Biafran people, our freedom is not negotiable. It's time for us to intensify whatever we are doing, to fight and fight harder than before. And our PM also applaud everyone who stands strong in this time of trial. And also encourage those that stay behind defense. What are they waiting for? Those that said, if they don't see him, they won't fight for freedom. Are you fighting the freedom for our Prime Minister Mazze Simoné? Are you fighting the freedom for me? No. You are fighting the freedom first of all to free yourself, for your generation, for the entire Biafran. Please applaud everyone that be doing the right thing. We want you to think deep, meditate and dwell on these words from our Prime Minister. Where he is not being free, he still have Biafran over 100% in heart. He's still fighting. What about you and I that are working freely? Our leader Mazze Namdekan is kidnapped from Kenya over four years now. He's still fighting. Are we going to allow the subordinates to defeat us? On Sunday, we will be addressing what is happening in our land, Biafraland? We will be addressing what been going on from River State to Ikar, to Urumi and the Hiamufu and Biafraland at large. But for now, while the fire is burning, we want Biafrans from Urumi and part of Idu to choose whose side are they going to belong. We know Urumi is in Biafraland. While we still have some. I start still thinking about if they part of Biafran or they are part of Nigeria. And for those that want to sympathize with Nigerian terrorist state. Remember, this is a country that have failure, a country that have nothing to offer. That is why we decide to exit Nigeria. We are not Nigerian, we are Biafrans and we are not going to validate Nigeria. We are not going to validate their laws, validate them as a country because we are not part of Nigeria. If you a Biafran and you are still doubting the preaching of our prophet Mazze Namdekan, because everything he have said have come to pass. When he said the Fulanis are coming. They are coming to invade our land. They are coming with their jihadist to Islamize us. And it's happening in our very own eye. Are you still doubting that? Seeing what is happening in Biafraland today. And even in Nigeria, because we are not Nigerian. In Nigeria, it's they are about to blow up like atomic bomb. Everywhere in Nigeria, there is chaos. And the problem we have in Biafraland today is the atrocity that have been committed by the Nigerian state. Fellow Biafrans, I want all of us to meditate on our Prime Minister message to us today. He stated clearly. He said, as a freedom, as our freedom is not negotiable and lies firmly in our hands. He holds in high regard those who have stood firm during these trying times and calls upon all of us to wear the coat of bravery. Are you one of the bravery ones? Have you buckle your seatbelt? Are you one of those that when you move forward two step, you move backward three step? There is this popular years ago musician called Maswell Odo. Maswell Odo sang a song, he said, forward ever backward never. And another musician sang a song, he said, rise up, rise up, fight for your rights. If you don't fight for your rights, no one will fight for your rights. And he continued to say, don't give up the fight. It's easy for Dr. Shu Ayoba to give up the fight and he will walk freely and be free. It is easy for our leader Mazze Namdekan to give up the fight and he will walk freely and even be paid or compensated or be bought over any word you use for that. Likewise, our Prime Minister. It's easy for him to give up the fight and work freely. But he decide not to. Fellow Biafrans that have not been supporting what we are doing, funding our liberation. Ask yourself question. What will it profit you when Biafraland, if Biafraland is overrun by the jihadists? But we Biafrans assure each and every one of our subordinates, our enemy, that that will never happen, not in our lifetime. Can never, never give up the fight. You have to remind me, there's a video trending. During the 1967 war to 1970, we call it the genocide war against the Biafran people. One of our mother then, while she was yelling, said, no, we are never, never that we are not going back to Nigeria. If she can be bold to utter such word then, what about now? We have been in Nigeria for decades now. It never worked well for us. All we get or receive from Nigeria is humiliation, marginalization. They have hurt us in different manners of way. They destroy Biafrans businesses in the north, in the southwest. Destroy their homes. Everything that Nigeria have offer us is pain and sorrow. That is why we are no longer part of Nigeria. We are Biafrans. Please, fellow Biafrans, on Sunday, we will be addressing what is happening in Biafraland. And while the fire is burning, let it keep burning in our enemy camp. Whatever you can do to free yourself, do it. Whatever you can do to your enemy, which is right for your freedom, do it. If they come to take your life, you take theirs first. Because it's your right to defend yourself. If they come to take your life and you refuse to take their life, then they will take your life. And we all know the power of Ajema or Ajem. Please kindly support what we are doing. We are not joking. Any opportunity that we have, we will use that opportunity to burn down their country. If they don't leave our land, if they don't leave us alone. Our leader Mazze Namdekan once said Somalia will be better than Nigeria. They better leave us alone and pack their belonging from Biafraland back to their country Nigeria. And for the Nigerian terrorist state, Okiwé is not your land. Okiwé don't belong to Nigeria, it's Biafran land. Disease from Okiwé. Will we defend our land? We will do everything humanly possible to defend Biafraland. Thank you, Nde wo.
Thank you, APM, thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable rep, over to you, back to your program, please.
All right, thank you, sir, thank you, sir. So now, we will do a general calling for our guests to pick up color and make their donations. And as you all heard, we have a huge responsibility. So please come on on and pick up the color and also make your donation. Now, Honorable Sunny, Mazze Mark from Admin California needs to call out the names of those who contributed in California. So I'll call, can I call on him to come and do that now?
Yeah, over to you.
All right, Mazze Mark. Are you there? Mazze Mark. Mazze Mark, are you there?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead now.
Hello, Biafrans. Please, I need to recognize those that actually made our contribution today possible. I'm going to recognize Mazze Achorno, who welcomed the APM Oge Nkere with 200 Ajema. I recognize Madame Vivian Kiss. Um, I recognize Madame Vivian Kiss, who also welcomed our APM with 50 Ajema. And Mark Genesis, my humble self, who welcomed the APM with 50 Ajema. And the collar knot was a family thing, the whole California made it possible. So, you know, we'll take the collar knot with 50 Ajema, thank you.
Ndewo, Ndewo.
Darlo, darlo.
Ndewo, thank you Mazie.
Alright, the floor is open.
Thank you, thank you, honorable APM.
Okay, the floor is open to our guests who, who wants to pick the collar knot and also make a contribution or their donation. It looks like we're gonna give them a jingle again.
Yeah, I'll give another jingle.
Yes, okay.
Alright, we have John Lewis, John Lewis, over to you.
Good evening, good evening Sunny.
Good evening.
Good evening, Biafrans. Although I'm not meeting United States, but I wish to support them in the factory Ajema. Um, and also I want to tell our APM, um, that we Biafrans are really honestly looking forward to see BDF base in Enugu state. Honestly, I don't know how it can be done, but to be frankly speaking, it's really needed, honestly. I should have asked this as a question, but I just want to leave it as a comment, okay? Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you Mazie John, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Life is a process, no matter how you go about it. Mazie Oke Chukunkere, Omale Cha Oke. The Biafran Republic of Mitten Exa Finance Minister is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support for the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defense Forces and Redignation related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever, especially in these critical times. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafrans, let's come together and support our Prime Minister Mazie Simoni Ba, who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year 2024. Obonye, Obonye, kembia kaza luno. Freedom is coming, yeah, yeah. Yo, 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 yo. Mazie Oke Chukunkere. Salute every Biafran specially. Dear. Oke Chiyo.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oke Chukuka ina yo no, 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 no.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Onyama na kiti, kiti ba kulo wuno.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Welo nditi chukuka sebele.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oh, Oke Chiyo.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Mazie Oke Chukunkere neke luno.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oke Chukuka ina yo no, 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 no.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oke Chukuka ina yo nanyasi.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life gives back what you gave to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to create wealth. So keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. Ayakata. Life is not easy. Sigh. Make it take and jeje. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize great team Odme Bojoku. I can't also forget General Philip Effiong. Oka Ma, Dalosaw. Kamche teba no men on the ground. Umoma o kobiwe, anyina fua kolonu. Ebon. De facto government in home land, chisi aniko. Special recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from day one. May you know him continue to flourish you in your different endeavors. This is Mazin Namdekanu, Omadike, who are not Biafran. Egadi. The Prime Minister, Obatobiye. Oke Chukunkere, simokelekiyo, oka ma.
Oke Chiyo. Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oke Chukuka ina yo no, 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 no.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Onyama na kiti, kiti ba kulo wuno.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Welo nditi chukuka sebele.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oh, Oke Chiyo.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Mama bi kono woli sa.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oke Chukuka ina yo no, no, no.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oke Chukuka ina yo nanyasi.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Ayole, ayiga kolole ya rolelu. Owi bole, che teba na lugo fo. When plus one is two, two plus two is four, you know? Onye puru chiyo sawa no, 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 no. Joy, joy, joy. Don't give up. When it is so close.
It's so close.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Never you give up, no, no, no.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Believe in your dreams, brother.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Never you say no, 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 no.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Oke Chukuka ina yo no.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Never you doubt your faith, no, no.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Keep your head up, keep on fighting.
Oke Chukuka Ma.
Ayava, ayava la yodo.
Oke Chukuka Ma. A big shout out to Mazie Oke Chukunkere. I salute you, my PM, Mazie Simoni Ba. Life is sweet when you're patient, ah. The greatest shout out goes to the media team, Twitter talent, Ndewo.
Back, back to you, our honorable rep.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, we have Noye, Noyezan is up, Noye, over to you.
Good evenings, good evening Biafrans.
Really?
Ndewo.
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 Um, Edjimohera nekile our Prime Minister Mazie. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Edjimohera nekile our Prime Minister Mazie Simoni Ba. Uh, our APM Mazie Oke Chukunkere, all the ministers, um, de facto government, all the reps, uh, our BDFs, all protocols observed. Uh, Maryland, Aj50 Ajema ewe roji, chisi aniko.
Ndewo.
Ndewo.
Oh, Ndewo.
Ndewo.
Noye is open. Okay, the floor is still open, we need more hands. Floor is still open, we have, do we have, uh?
Uh, sorry, Mazie Manika.
Yes.
Hello, I'm gonna send the receipts too.
Um, well, just you, you should, uh, I think you keep the receipt, you are the admin, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, you keep the receipt.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, uh, more hands, more hands up, I, I, I know some people are still maybe getting off work or on their way to work, usually Friday evenings are kind of hectic because of traffic and stuff. But again, um, when it comes to freedom, there's really no convenient time for to fight the fight of freedom. Uh, we just have to, uh, make sure that we are doing our part. So more hands up, we need more hands up. I know tomorrow is also fundraising, weekly fundraising. Uh, but remember that there's, there are folks in, on X space who are making donations um, just about every day, so it doesn't matter how much you contribute, as long as you are, as long as you are doing what, something that your heart and your mind and your soul is in, is in agreement with. So go ahead and, and make that donation. Remember, remember this, this battle is, is not ours really, is the Lord's. Remember that, but also the Lord requires us to, you know, to turn our, our, our pick axes and pick forks into, into, into weapons, our knives into, uh, whatever we have into weapons to defend ourselves. So in other words, we have to do something. We have to do something, uh, before we can expect a result. If you don't do anything, you can, the result will always be the same. It's like they say, you can't be doing the same thing over and over and expect a different results. Yes, go ahead, we got a hand up.
I, I haven't gotten an update yet.
Oh, okay.
I, I just went to, uh, use this opportunity that we are waiting to encourage everyone of us here and those that will be listening to us later. And I, I again, buying into what you're saying and into, uh, what our APM has said and what we have been saying over time. Um, I call on all Texans and everyone who is here listening, please, 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 what we are doing is for ourselves. What we are doing is for ourselves, every drop of water will make an ocean. Every bro, every drop of water will make an ocean. Maybe some of us who are here or might be listening, I think that a little Ajema or short Ajema they have, uh, will not go anywhere. But trust me, trust everyone, as much as it's coming out from your heart and as long as we have gathered here, where we place as an altar, whatever offering you bring here, we will richly be blessed. And it is going to make mountain and it's going to move ocean. Do not look at how little it is. Nothing is too much is offered here and nothing is too little is offered here. Everyone here, we appreciate whatever you give, please, wherever you are and whatever you have. Just like that day, the Lord, our God, our Lord Jesus Christ told his apostles, if time has come, the time is coming and that time is now. If you have two cloaks, give it out, give out one and get a sword. But seriously, we need something more than a sword. And you can see, I just overheard one of our brother here who made a donation from somewhere, Mazie John, trying to make a request for a BDF base in Enugu. Seriously, every, every state and region and cronies of Biafran land need this base. But then it will not just happen, it is this same Ajema we are talking about. We are going to volunteer men, we are going to volunteer ourselves. When we do not have men to volunteer, then whatever money we are giving to has its own path to play. So to get a base in Enugu, Anambra, Amambra will request a base, Oweri will request a base. We need Ajema, please, please, everyone here, the time has come. Defending Biafran land is a tax that everyone must, must pay. It's a tax that we must keep. No, we will not allow the full and eat invaders to take over our land, no, no, we will not allow it. You can see many of us here are women, seriously, and we are here defending the land of our modest land, defending the land of our husbands, defending the lands of our fathers and the land of our children. We want every man here to rise up, we are defending your father's land too. It is your father's land we are defending. It is your children's land you are going to defend. Though what we are doing right now may not, you may look at it as, it is not, it doesn't worth it. It worth it when your children will have no place to go or take as their home back home. Please, everyone who will be listening here later or here on, no matter whatever little, however little you have, please come forward, we will appreciate it, it is going to move mountains. It is going to move mountains, it is going to go a long way to achieving our liberation. Thank you, our Prime Minister is in there for us. Our, um, leader Onyendu is still in there for us and their mind and soul, body and spirit is in here for this freedom. They are not relenting, if they are, where they are incarcerated and not relenting. What about all that are here? We should not be overwhelmed, we should not be overwhelmed by wherever they are. They are in there for a reason and for a purpose and at the right time, they will all be out. They actually want to see what we're going to do even in their absence. Please let us pick up this challenge and do the needful. We cannot be out here and they will be in there and nothing will be happening. Please, to defend our land. Please, to defend our land is an ultimate tax. We all have to put our resources together. These are resources includes our time, our money and everything we have to secure our land. Please comrades, brothers and sisters, wherever you are, please. Let's do the needful. No matter ten a gemma, five a gemma, however the spirit leads you, it is welcome.
We got three hands up.
Thank you.
There were.
There were, there were.
Okay.
All right, we have an honorable, okay? Honorable, okay, over to you.
Uh, good evening and special greetings to all honorables, honorable A P M, there were honorable minister, Apurawandewo. God will continue to bless all of you, all the great men. Men and women of Biafra. Uh, I greet all of you, all of you, all of you. I'm overwhelmed with joy. All the good messages, good news that keep pouring in. Uh, please, it's gonna be a fast one. I just want to know if, uh, uh, Mazi, um, Amenike, uh, acted on my message. Uh, I don't know if you, you, uh, did you read my, my, my message, please?
Uh, yes, I'm at. One second, um.
Okay, so definitely you've not, that's, since, since you are.
I, I thought I did, but I'm gonna remember exactly what.
Uh, okay, oh, okay, yeah, because I am at work, but I'll be signing off now, so definitely when I, if I enter or miss, uh, I will lose a connection. That's why I just wanted to ask, so that if you have not, then I can assure that I say, um, uh, put it, uh, out now. Uh, it's just, uh, I want to, uh, uh, greet, uh, prime minister, A P M and all the honorables for the good works today. And then in support of, uh, A P M store to USA, uh, fifty a gemma for maybe a new G or whatever. Uh, uh, for me, I will pick it up anytime that I'm available because, uh, I'm closing work now and will definitely lose connection. That's why I say, let me rush and know if you have, uh, made the announcement. So, uh, so that means, uh, please, uh. Uh, no, it's, it's okay. So it's, uh, please, uh, uh, fifty, uh, a gemma, uh, my supporter, uh, A P M set to, uh, to, to USA today. Uh, I will send you the receipt when I get from today, please, because, um, I will definitely sign off, yeah. Because, uh, just you can greet everybody, everyone.
Thank you.
There were.
Thank you.
There was. Be safe, drive in home, be good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Zoom user, over to you, zoom user. Zoom user, go ahead, please.
Hello, everyone.
There were.
There were.
Please, uh, it's Ohio. It's Ohio, so put my name there, I don't know how it went out. Okay. Yeah. Greetings once again, ladies and gentlemen in the house. Our A P M. Hi, Bundar, how you? We are welcoming you, saying thank you for your good work. We are seeing your hand work. You are not, uh, a, a talking type, but your actions speaks louder than voice. And that is why how we know a man. But when he seek a way, that's not, that not, doesn't make sense. So, um, one that glad is, oh, my, it's a one that glad is. Also, she said that I should welcome you with hundred a gemma. One that Kate. Also, he's, she said I should welcome you with fifty a gemma. And also, uh, what P M birthday fifty a gemma. Uh, uh, one that Amaka is welcoming you once again with fifty a gemma. Uh, one Columbia Jude is welcoming you to, uh, United States with fifty a gemma. And the one of our brother Tony is welcoming you, uh, with ten a gemma. So all total of four hundred and ten a gemma. Thank you so much and keep doing the good work. God will bless you at the due time and all of you there that are, uh, working day and night to make sure that our land will not be taken by the enemies. Just knowing that the rewarder of them that diligently seek him is watching. And we are not gonna give up. We keep fighting until the last day and the, the last day, we will all be in Biafran land to jubilate. Thank you and, uh, bye bye.
There were.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Amanda Amaka. That was good, that was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amaka, Ohio. This, the floor is still open to everyone. Support, um. A P M's honor visits. To U S North and South. Also pick color. To answer your name. Floor is open. To everyone.
Alright, people, let's, 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 let's do this, let's do this. I know some are on the road, some are. Getting off work, some are. Probably waking up. But we, we, we implore you to.
Oh.
Just. Come on down. And make that donation. This is where the tire meets the road. Because. Uh. All these years. We. I said, people have been wondering, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? Well, this is the moment. The things are, are happening. We, we have. Uh, the greatest nation on earth. Who's listening to us. They're not just listening to us, they are very interested in what we are doing. They want to know more. This is an opportunity for you. To show that you absolutely, absolutely care for your freedom. Remember. It is your freedom, not. America's freedom. So, uh, the Amer- the American government. Wants to know, know where you stand. I know we have, we've had so many people who wants to paint a different narrative to what we are doing. But they don't have that inside track we have to the, to the legislature. So please come on, come on and join us. I think we have a hand there, honorable, Sonny.
Yes, we have, uh, Anorika, Anorika, over to you, please.
So. Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, there were.
Yeah, happy today. Thanks today. We had a great news from our prime minister. So I'm supporting the. U S and North American with a little token I have. Two thousand A J. I'm so happy today. So please, bread dance, everybody should come up and donate. The money is our weapon. Without money, we are going nowhere. At least we see the work of our B D F. And Amber states what they did. They are trying so much, so we need money. People, please come up and donate. Donate because it is our freedom and it's our last hope. We see what is happening in the zoo right now. So this is our opportunity to make things happen in our land. The war is out, the war that washing. So my people, please donate. I'm happy today. So thank you very much. Thank you all. I remain blessed.
There were.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Monica. Well, bless.
There were, there were.
Be blessed.
Yes. Yes.
And all the medias. And all the medias.
Eh, closing prayer.
Uh, that's a hand up there.
Yes, uh, honorable, over to you. Honorable, over to you, please.
Yeah. Good morning, Biafras from here. Um. Now look, I know, sorry, I don't know if, if there is noise coming, please bear with me. There will be noise coming. Because of where I am. Yeah, our A P M. Honorable. Mazi Oggetukere, Odogun Okere. I really appreciate you for the wonderful news. You gave us this, this early morning here in Australia. About the, the visit to our P M. And also I want to appreciate Imam Madavon, what a wonderful man. The first time I come in contact, I come in contact with him was, uh. When he came to, when the, when the C R C came to Australia here. To settle a, a case between. The Biafran liaison and the, and the, and the loopy woods. I really appreciate Imam Madavon for the wonderful job you are doing for standing by our peers. And also. I want to appreciate. Mazi Amenike. For the wonderful thing you are doing. Standing in the salute. And, uh. It's not easy, but you must remain resolute and consistent. One of the details that you have to do. Is to guide, uh, is to guide our governments, jealousy. Because Biafrans don't know what Mazi Simon, uh, our P M have done for us. By giving us this government. No matter whatever you are doing. Never you undermine our government, because this is all we have. For us to have a government as a Biafran in this criti- critical time of the zoo. If you don't appreciate our P M, you have to come and appreciate him. He's such a wonderful man. And also I want to encourage all Biafrans. As the zoo is boiling, it is time to buckle your belts. Anything we have to do, whether you are in the zoo. Anywhere you are, you have to buckle your belt. Enough is enough. If you are living in abroad in Despera and you seen whatever, that is, we seen the way things are moving around there. And you are still hoping for Nigeria existence. It must be a fool. It is time we come together and make sure we bring Nigeria down. Nigeria must fall for humanity to, 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 to exist. Nigeria must collapse for people to survive. It is a shame to be a Nigerian. We must join hands together and make sure Nigeria collapse. That's all I can say. Um, I want to appreciate our A P M. For the wonderful news you gave all this morning, for the, for the visitation of our P M, to our P M in Finland. Honestly, when I heard that, I was amazed. I really appreciate you, Mazi Oggetukere. So without wasting time, sorry, I'm at work. I'm gonna support, uh. North and South America with hundred a gemma. And also, um, Pezio Kudondo, one of Biafran. I don't know, I asked Mazi, Mazi, so, um, uh, so, so, bam, bam, bam. To send me the account where we redeemed the, the, the slay this I made during the Italian, uh. Italian, uh, A P M visitation to, to Thailand. But he didn't get back to me. So I don't know what to do if he, because I know the, the de facto government in Holland, they too, they need their own money. So I don't know what to do if he, because I know the, the Department of Government in Holland, they too, they need their own money to be running their government. Everything is money. So I would like you to send me, send the account to, to, to Passavamvamvam, so you can forward it to me. So I can make the payment tomorrow. I thank you, Biafrans. It's all about Biafran. I thank everyone. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Yoyo, um, concerning the. Uh, town hall meeting of Itayana, please do the. Payment to the, uh, normal, uh, official, uh.
Website.
Website. Just send your receipt and then indicate that this one is for Itayana.
Itayana.
When you send the receipt. Thank you.
Now, I'll, I will add everything up because if you do it separate, you know, they charge money too, you know, bank transfer, they charge money. Now, I will do it together, yeah, I will do it together and, uh, yeah, we send the receipt to Passavamvamvam.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ezio Kobondo. I really appreciate you, Sonia Abawa. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And we have, um, 10 ajema from Stella. Ndidi, or Ndidi Stella. 10 ajema, thank you, thank you. We need more hands, please. More hands, more hands, more hands, more hands. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We continue. Please, um. A PM made announcement before now. About, um, intel of the zoo terrorists unleashing their. Uh, Fulani rats. In a key way. So. Biafrans. You had to. Pay indoors and the security conscious. Within this environment. So that you give the BDF enabling environment to be able to combat the terrorists that will be looming. It's not time for you. To undermine the information and then. That is when you want to go for morning mass. Don't say, this is when I have to go for morning mass, because you say morning mass is four o'clock in the morning. Morning mass is three o'clock, is five o'clock in the morning, is six o'clock in the morning, you have to make it. Heaven help those who have themselves. Keep the ground free. So that. Men that are equal to the thugs will engage the terrorists that comes into our lands. They will not go scot-free. They must be taken care of. So please don't undermine the security intel. Our A, um. Prime Minister. Has sent a very important message to Biafrans. And when you check the message he sent. It goes in line with what our Supreme Leader said. Our Supreme Leader said, do not back down because I have been in detention for over four years now. And he said, this last year is not going to end my life. Continue to fight. Because our freedom is non-negotiable. And when you listen to our PM, the same message came. Our freedom is non-negotiable. Continue to fight. What we will do is what will bring the two of them out speedily. He's not only talking that we'll do the work. But it is the tools that is needed to use to go to farm. That is needed of the laborers. The laborers are many. But the raw materials are few. So let's equip the laborers with the raw materials needed to comb the bushes. Needed to expunge the terrorists that we just heard of, that they are coming into Biafra land. The entire people of the One Nigerian Conduction are waking up. We applaud them. Mazi Nndikano said. When it will come to your doorsteps, that is when you will realize that what. Mazi Nndikano was preaching since 2012 had been a reality. But now you think it's all about our oil and gas, that we are trying to stop you from taking. Today is not about our oil and gas. The Fulani terrorists are rampaging everywhere. So. Ask yourself the question. Where they massacred 150 and where they massacred 200 and where they massacred 300? And where they massacred 50? Where they massacred over 20 today in Benue? Where their deposit of oil and gas in that place? So it's not all about the oil and gas. It's about taking you all over. Total. Conquest. Of what happened in Afghanistan. Where the Taliban took hold. And then the president or the prime minister. Had to run into a flight and disappear and leave the country. Now we are still calling on everyone to wake up. In Prime Minister's message, he also stressed that, um. He is disappointed. In some of you that decide to stay on defense. Looking. Waiting. Thinking of what to do. That is a very good point for you to take home. He is disappointed of you. You know why he is disappointed of you? Because he has been teaching you for the past three years. And four years. How many years will you count for Mazi Nndikano? Then, within one month and two months, you cannot use your brain. And put in gear to amplify what these two leaders have taught you. For the past years. They set up a template. We saw the multidimensional approaches that Biafrans have been using before now. Then, in the absence of your two leaders. You are telling me that you are confused of what to do. Do you suddenly forget the BDF that used. To destroy the terrorists and the terrorists will be crying every day? You suddenly forget the activeness of what led to One Nigeria looking for the head of the Prime Minister? If Biafrans were not super active in the liberation in the homeland. Will One Nigeria be looking for the Prime Minister to kidnap? Will they be looking for our Supreme Leader to kidnap? He kept up his message with. Everyone should continue to support the BRGIE. Even more than what you never did before. Because. That is the mother hen to our liberation. That is the mother hen to our recognition. That is the mother hen to the total restoration. And actualization of the United States of Biafra. We call on all Biafrans, not just to listen to the. Messages of our Prime Minister. Not the one we hear from our lobbies, not the one we hear from our attorneys. Not the one he sent across through a third party. This is a one-on-one physical. Visit which we had with our PM. And he's very strong, just like you will see Oyendu, very strong. But what will keep him stronger is when he hears that. You have been able to convince the zoo terrorists and Finland government. That our freedom is in our hands by multiplying everything that we have been doing before. So that whatever they are having as a reason of keeping our leaders. They will understand that it has never been about our leaders, it has been about the Biafran people. And that in their presence and in their absence, the Biafran people are doing more. So release our leaders for us. So while you look up to international community for our recognition. And for the American Congress to do more. On our demand to bring One Nigeria to the red list. We have a responsibility of. Getting our farm tools. Fully equipped for our farmers that have to do work in the farm. Please. Tomorrow is. Our normal fundraising. On Sunday again, we have another town hall meeting. And today we are here. Let's make it happen. Because it is all our Biafra and nobody can do it for us. Thank you so much, um. Um, US, North and South Rep and all the admins. We see the year we never go, they were from here. Honorable Rage and Fury, over to you, please. Your hand is up.
Um, okay, um, thank you very much, my beloved brother. Honorable Minister of Information. I hope I'm coming up, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. My special greetings to all the honorable Cabinet Ministers of the Biafra Republic Government in exile. And to all leaders from time immemorial to the time of our. Uh, leader Mazi Oyendu Nndikano and our Prime Minister, the Biafra integrity. The Biafra, the Biafra pride. The brave, the bo- the boldness of Biafra, His Excellency Simon Epa, so this very present time of the acting Prime Minister. His Excellency Oguchukure. I do not forget all the different department and their leaders, especially the military department. I salute the Chief of Defence Staff in the person of Tripole Star General Igwebutunzo. Special greetings to all the Biafran liberation persons. Thank you very much, our brothers and sisters in United States of America. Uh, this fundraising I'm going to support, uh, my name is Regent Fury and I'm representing from Uroubo Isoko State of Biafra and I'll be supporting this. Fundraising with fifty cent. And I will also support the fundraising of, uh, our brother from Ita Anang. Uh, like because I was trying to come to this, to the zoo. I couldn't make it, so I'm going to support that fundraising with fifty cent, I swear. So hopefully tomorrow I'm going to redeem the money through the Uroubo Isoko, uh, admin. And that aside, I'll, I'll also want to dedicate a little song to our people. I swear for the sake of this fundraising. And goes like, it goes like this. There will be a time in our lives. We will be remembered. For the price we pay. There will be a time in our lives. When we be remembered. For the pain we face. When I got a chance, I'm gonna tell you what I know about this world we live in. It may seem so beautiful from where you are. It may look so innocent in your eyes. But let me tell you, it's not the same with Biafra. Freedom comes. To those who go out and make it happen. It was come. To those who wait. Freedom comes. To those who go out and make it happen. It was come. To those who wait. We can sit here and complain. About the killing of Biafrans. At the end of the day, it is our lives. Freedom comes. To those who go out and make it happen. It was come. It will come to those who wait. We just have to take it. Our freedom is in our hands. You just have to take it. Your freedom is in your hands. We just have to take it. Our freedom is in our hands. Freedom comes to those who go out and make it happen. It will come to those who wait. to those who go out and make it happen. It will come to those who wait. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Rajan Fury.
Thank you, thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have 100 Ajma update from Augustina. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, with today. Augustina. 100 Ajma. Fellow Biafrans, by now, we are supposed to have know that we are not Nigerians. It's hard time. We do what is necessary and what is the right thing to do. The country is about to explode, the country called Nigeria. While we are watching, seeing everything that is playing out the way it is, even those that have faith in Nigeria before start to reason like Osman. Start thinking twice. Please, people like that, we want to let them know that Nigeria is not for them. Nigeria is never meant to be a country. It is a scam. It is the British creation. Nigeria is to serve the purpose of the British Empire. Their aim is to make us dry. Their aim is because of the resources in Biafranland. Just think about this, ask yourself a question. What about if Nigeria territory and also the Biafran territory did not have mineral resources? Do you think the British government will have key interest in Biafranland? The answer is no. It's all about them. It's all about what they would profit or benefit from our land. The bad news is that after everything, after all the resources we have in Biafranland, we, the original owners, can't even lay our hand on our own resources or profit from it. Our resources as of now is still serving the interest of the British Empire. It's hard time we fight. We set the record straight. Biafra is already re-declared. We have to defend it. We have to do everything or money possible to defend our land. We heard from two great leaders, our sister country Ambazonia, from Dr. Shua Ayuba yesterday, and from our Prime Minister today. It's all about, we should defend our land. It's all about we stay strong. Because freedom is worth fighting for. And our freedom is not negotiate. I don't care what country that want to come and take over our freedom from us. We cannot negotiate with anybody, with any country. Our freedom is our freedom. It's our own God-given right. God gave us the right to live as a people. Our leader Mazinamdekanu preached for years. Those that are calling him, believing in him today, when he was here with us, they despise him. They did not believe in him. Where are all these people calling Obatobi, Obatobi? Where are all these people calling Prime Minister, Prime Minister? He have sent several messages. Or he's fighting for his freedom of his people. If they really love him, those that really care about him, they know what to do. Our land is bleeding. We have enemies surrounding our neighbourhoods. Even as of tomorrow, the Nigerian terrorist states are planning to attack Okiwu. Who will defend Okiwu? We are defending Biafranland and we have a large territory to defend. And resources is needed to defend our land. We encourage every Biafra to be part of this process. We encourage every Biafra to stand up for their right. We encourage every Biafra not to give up the fight. We'll keep fighting whether we are big or small in number. And at the end, Biafra must surely totally be liberated from the hand of the occupier. But as far as we, Biafrans, is concerned, we are not Nigerian, can never be Nigerian. Our foreforefather never claimed to be Nigerian. If a former president called Good Luck Jonathan can say clearly that Nigeria is a scam, that Nigeria never meant to be together. And the people of Nigeria are not actually trying to make it work. Just like the recent activity going on, when the Fulani headsmen are killing people in Ihiamufu, terrorising villages, community, raping women, children, beheading, kidnapping, the Nigerian terrorist state never condemned it. The so-called Ariwaji Jihadists group, demonic, satanic group of set of people with their religion, they never condemn it. They take joy seeing such atrocity happening to our people. They applaud and they are happy with it. When the jihadis in the name of Islamisation killing, committing all kinds of crime against Biafrans, the Nigerian terrorist state never condemn it. They are happy seeing it happen that way. But what happened in Urumi days ago? Because Fulani is a kill this time around. The people of Ariwad, the Notanas, both those that are blogging and the ones that are not bloggers, they are all over social media ranting about the terrorists that we are killed or by. Now, you see the double standard. Now, the Notanas know how to rant in social media, complain how their people are being killed. And these people are terrorists that come to Urumi to kill the people of Urumi. And Urumi, they have been killed in thousands. We want to let the people of Urumi know. With the happening, they can tell now seeing what is going on, that they are not part of Nigeria. They better buckle up their seatbelt and do what is right. Defend their land. Fellow Biafrans, I don't like to talk too much, I believe in action. And to make the job easy for you and I, your cooperation is needed. Kindly support your freedom. Support your liberation. That is the only hope we all have to survive what is going on now. It is for us to totally liberate ourselves from Nigeria. If we don't do that, Nigeria will swallow us. I was listening to space today. One of our sister, I believe, her name is Effe, Helen, I mean. She asked, I believe Effe, to play a video where the Fulani terrorists, where they were ranting, that their aim and purpose is to kill us all and dig their Quran in the ocean. Their aim and objective, not just to Islamise us, is to wipe us from the surface of the earth. And if we keep quiet, that will happen. We have to fight back. If we there waiting for the United States of America to come and fight for us, that would never happen. If we are waiting for Israel, that will never happen. If we are waiting for European Union that is already compromised, that will not happen. It will only happen when we start fighting virtually, defeating our enemy, giving our enemy the word to word to language, that is when the international community will step in, knowing how serious we are. Our freedom is in our hand. And we must liberate Biafranland from neighbourhood to neighbourhood, from block to block. I'm so happy to be part of this liberation movement, seeing leaders that have inspired me, like our leader Mazinamdekanu, our Prime Minister Mazis Simon Epa, of which I'm acting on his behalf, and Dr. Chu Ayuba. These men have displayed they have displayed to their people that they are leaders indeed. Are you not inspired by these three great men I mentioned? What have they done wrong? I believe you and I know the answer. They done nothing wrong. Rather, they are fighting to liberate their people. They are fighting to liberate their nation. Just look at these three leader, where they are. They never ask for this. It's because they want to free their people. If you have never have a victim from this so-called One Nigerian terrorist state in your family, in your neighbourhood, I believe you have have a victim being a Biafra. We are all Biafrans by blood. We all will fight this fight together. And at the end, Biafra will totally be liberated. Thank you. Honorable Minister of Information, based on the schedule and you know the US Town Hall meeting don't usually be on weekdays. A lot of people are still at work. So it's normally on Sunday. So I don't know how much time we still have. Please. How many you get, you're here, right?
Honorable Rep, are you there? Are you done with your programme?
Yeah, nope.
For your programme now.
Okay, so any more heads to donate? For example, I am going to thank APM with that information and the former information he gave out to us, I'm going to thank him with 200 Ajma. So that brings it to 400 Ajma.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, honorable, you know, US town hall meeting is on Sundays. Yes, sir. Yeah, so you're gonna double, you're gonna double, you're gonna double what you just did for putting on Friday. So that will be your fight. Yes, sir. Uh, we are, we are scheduled all the way through, uh, June now, so. Yeah, I know, but next time we have to, US town hall meeting always gonna be Sunday. All right. Please, not, uh, think today supposed to have been like kind of question and answer and then you will know, uh, we have any town hall meeting. I thought it's just like US gathering. So Sundays is our US town hall meeting. So we have to, so this, uh, April, how many more weeks, uh, town hall meeting we have to go? Uh, one or two? Uh, 27 April. Okay, you already have a date for April. Right. Okay, so US will be more prepared, right, for 27, right? Absolutely, sir. Honorable love.
We need to make a move.
All right.
Okay, I, I think I was muted. Sorry, sir. Um, this is just, uh, to make up for March that we could not. So instead of having zero for March, that's why we have this today.
Uh, this is one, uh, one that Abigail, uh, there's us, uh, admin. I mean, is this is warming up, right? Warming up for, for 27th?
I think she's muted. A warming up.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, Honorable Minister of Information, I think I will wrap it up from here. Tomorrow, it's our regular, we know what we'll be doing tomorrow and, uh, please everyone should show up, show up, please. Show up. What we are doing is real. Our freedom is real. If it is not, we need to ask ourselves question, why then? Do they still hold our leader Mazin Namdikan? They don't want to release him. They scared. But what we are doing is what we free him and he must be free. And our Prime Minister will be with us shortly. We believe that he will be free as well because he done nothing wrong. He just fighting for his freedom, just like Finland. The Finlandos, they fought for their freedom to free themselves from Russia. Our warning to the EU, they need to do the right thing. They have to stop dining with the terrorists, jihadis people or country that terrorize people. If they don't stop that, Europe will be Islamized. They will test what jihadis is all about, not by us, by the same jihadis terrorist countries that they have been whining and dining with. If EU, starting from the Great Britain to Finland to wherever, if they don't stop what they are doing, what goes around comes around. If they decide to dine and wine with terrorists, with jihadists, with people that want to Islamize us or Islamize the whole world, with people that call us infidel, these people, we in turn still visit them. It's happening in UK again already. It's happening in France. EU do the right thing. European Union, the evil that they are embracing, that evil will come back and hurt them unless they disease from it. EU is panicking about Russia, that Russia is about to swallow the whole European again. And they are fighting back because they want to be free. Because they don't want Russia to do what? To swallow them. We Biafrans are fighting so that the Nigerian state will leave us alone. The same way they are fighting to be free and live as a free country, we Biafrans are doing the same. So it's not a crime, it's never a crime. When you fight for what you believe, when you fight for your freedom, when you want to be free. If they support evil against Biafran people, that evil will visit them, but not through us. That evil that they support and dine and wine with, that evil will be their portion. Thank you from here. There were, there were APM.
Thank you, APM. Um, honorable rep, over to you for your closing remarks.
All right, I, I, I thank Biafrans once again for those of us who are resolute uh, and consistent because that is the recipe to achieve our freedom. So I, I am very grateful to those of us who made it this evening uh, and contributed. And I also beckon to others to wake up from their slumber. It's not gonna be a walk in a park. So we are asking you to consider again. We have tomorrow and we have Sunday. So come on and join us. This, this is the time because if you think Nigeria will all of a sudden become better after so many years, then you are not living in, 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 in the real world because the owners of the lands in Nigeria are waking up. And so come and join us. Come out tomorrow for the weekly fundraising and come out on Sunday for, I believe it's, uh, Omambala. Is that right? Who's? Sunday Town Hall? So come on out, come on out. Don't be shy. Okay? And, um, I will call on, uh, Ohio Admin to give us, uh, are you, uh, you ready for the closing prayer? Is that? Can we do that?
Yes, 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 we are ready.
Okay, uh, call on, uh, Ohio rep, uh, excuse me, Ohio Admin. Are you there? Ohio Admin? Joyce? Madame Joyce?
You just, uh, Maka?
Yes. Are you there? Madame, Madame, are you there, Madame Joyce Amaka? Okay, I don't, uh.
I think you lost the connection.
Oh. All right, uh.
Maybe you can call on Mama Nene to do the closing prayer.
Okay, uh, Mama Nene, uh, can you please take us home?
And I was raising my hand because I didn't see where to raise hand. My, my 20 Ajma for the, for the meeting. The joy that I had today, God is hearing our prayer and we know that in a short time, it will perfect all that he has started. So, uh, 20 Ajma please, because we have another day tomorrow and next tomorrow. I'm from Omambala, okay?
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, in, Heavenly Father, in the name of Chukwokikabiam, our Lord and our God, the God that made ears that can hear and made eyes that can see. Father, you have seen the oppression that your children are going through. This is not what you expected for them. This is not your plan for them, that people will be wasting the blood of the children that you have created when they cannot create a rat and much more a chicken. But look at us, oh Lord, as the prayer went from the beginning. Father, if there's anything our ancestors have done that has caused this calamity, Lord, we are asking of you, Lord, forgive us and restore us back. We know that you are a merciful God. You say when you forg-, when you forgive, you forget. Father Lord, please forgive us, even as we have come today, oh Lord, to raise funds to support our angels. Lord God of heaven, you have been the one protecting them. In the bushes, come rain, come storm and we appreciate you. We can never at any time take your glory. No man, no woman, no, nobody but of a woman will take your glory because you are the creator of heaven and earth. Father, we appreciate you for what you have done. We appreciate you for what you are yet doing and the one you are yet to do. Heavenly Father, we give you all the glory. We ask for the strength, oh Lord, on our Oyendu. We have seen what you are doing in his life. Those who can move around, they still die. How much more somebody in confinement for almost five years. Lord God Jehovah, we thank you for his health and we cover him with the blood of Chukwokikabiam. So also his adopted son. Lord, that we know that wherever he is, is hearing us. Ah. PM, know that we love you. Our eyes have, our legs have not reached, but our hearts are with you. The genuine Biafrans are praying for you, especially me. There's no day I don't call on your name and Oyendu because I witness what happened in Biafra. Anytime I want to talk about it, tears flow my eyes. I just want you, Lord, to be merciful to us and restore us. I lost, I lost my immediate brother there. Please, Father, have mercy upon us, restore us back. Give us, Father, that you have promised our Oyendu that this is Biafra, take it. Spiritually, you have given it to us. But we know we have sabotages, we have a, we have judases in our midst. Father, put every Judas, every saboteur in our midst. Even the Biafrans that are conniving with them, whatever they are collecting from them, let it turn into fire in their bosom. Heavenly Father, we are thanking you for what you are doing. We are thanking you for our APM. Lord, he's not a man of many words. Father Lord, encourage him, strengthen him, guide him, direct him. Give him that wisdom you gave Solomon. That, uh, and grant him favor, even as speak in the capital here. Let them hear him. Let them take the words to heart and begin to act with those words. And I thank you, Lord, for every briggy cabinet. Lord God of heaven, visit them individually as they are striving to do their best. Encourage them, oh Lord. And their faces are so problem facing each and everyone. But we have a God who is able to do exceedingly abundantly, more than we can even ask him according to his power that walk in us because we are, Omuchukwokikabiam. Lord God Jehovah, we are giving you glory. No one can share it. As we gather tomorrow, Father, encourage each and everyone, even those who have not come before. Father, remove shame and fear from them that we both know they will come to contribute. For this is our, uh, uh, our strength, the liberation. The angels, oh Lord, that you are sent to us. Nobody pays them, but they have put their lives on the line. But we know that the Lord God we serve is shielding them from the strife, from every element. Can you imagine them for how many years they have been there? Father Lord Jehovah, we are thanking you for each and every one of them. The unsung hero that we don't know. Their family members, their children who are missing them. Father, encourage them in the Lord and support them wherever they need support. You say, you Lord, you meet our needs. Father, meet every need that they need and meet every need of the Biafran government in exile. Father, you say you make a difference between them that save you and those that save you not. You know those who have come to, to disorganize, to destabilize because that's what the work of Satan. He comes to kill and to destroy. But you, Lord, you have come to give us life and every Biafran will have that life and we see Biafra come to fruition. Thank you, eternal rock of ages. If we begin to pour out our hearts, days and months will not end. But Lord, we know that you are doing motherless things in our midst and we are thanking you knowing that you will do more. Thank you for tomorrow. Thank you for next tomorrow. Thank you for our life are hidden in you, Chukwokikabiam. Continue to walk in us to do of your will and of your desire until we actualize that which you, Lord, you have given us, rejoicing as Oyendu said, dancing in the street like David did. I will be number one to do that, no matter the age. Thank you, precious Father. We give you all the glory, honor and adoration. In the name of Chukwokikabiam, I will pray. Amen.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name. God bless you.
All praises.
There, Mama.
Thank you.
Okay, my people. So tomorrow is another day.
It's a true, true.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Amen.
Man, thank you. See you all tomorrow. I'm shutting down the Zoom now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
See you tomorrow.
All right, honorable, tomorrow. Amen.
Thank you.